The Motion for the Council of Gould all in favor and opposed. It's a vote. And we will ask his honor, the mayor, Mayor Benton Court, to approach the podium.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on a very exciting proposal for the city of Peabody. And before I begin, I also wanted to recognize Tony. Are you giving her ice cream, Tom? Is that what you're doing? No, but Tony, well deserved recognition. And I'm thrilled that you're here in Peabody, working for our kids. And you're a great role model. I still would have liked to have heard you sing the National Anthem, though. I think I would have liked that. And Olivia, that was a beautiful letter. Council Gravel said, "Well, that was beautiful. Great job." So I'm here today, and I'm joined by a number of people. And we wanted to make a presentation tonight. It won't be a long presentation, but a presentation regarding our efforts towards a children's museum here in the city of Peabody. And I wanted to mention, we have certainly our community development director Kurt Bella Vance. We have Deanne Healy, who runs our Peabody Main Streets, and former director of the Peabody Council, Peabody Chamber of, Peabody Chamber of Council. Jeez. Martha Holden, I think now, what is you, the, at Holden Doyle, you're the Director of Community Engagement? The Director of Community Engagement. You know, our former library director. Melissa Robinson. Camille Bartlett from PAT. Tim Brown from Northeast Ark. Ted Neary. All of you know Ted and his work for the city in a variety of, in a variety of ways. But we're moving here, moving forward today with the presentation. I just want to be very upfront that we are not asking for any votes today. We are not asking for any approvals. We are not at that stage yet. We have to come forward to you with a much broader business plan, more of a financial breakdown of trying to make this project a success. This here is to talk about our efforts over the last few years to bring the children's museum to the city of Peabody, into our downtown, and the great effect that we think we can have on our community and for our residents. As you know, this has been in the works now for a number of years. It originated, actually, some years ago when we had the Economic Development Council, which then moved into PDAT, Peabody Downtown Action Team, and the Peabody Main Streets. And they thought, an idea on the children's museum originated from Mark Whiting, the general manager of the North Shore Mall. He proposed that I, that concept as an idea for us to look at. Where, near where he lives, they have a children's museum in Dover, New Hampshire, which they were able to take from Portsmouth, New Hampshire, their neighbor. A number of us, a number of the people on the Peabody Cultural Collaborative and city officials, I think even some of the folks here, went to that tour of Dover, New Hampshire. We took a bus trip. And I don't want to speak for everybody, but we were certainly very impressed with the operation. Dover is very similar to Peabody in that it's kind of an older industrial city that's had to redefine itself. And their efforts to bring the, to bring a children's museum to their downtown was a huge part of moving their downtown forward. And it's had a great effect on their downtown businesses and restaurants and shops in that area. And we thought that this is the concept that might be able to work here in the city of Peabody. So certainly collectively, we as a group have made a great investment in our downtown over the years. And I think we're starting to see real positives, and we've taken some very good steps. Certainly, the Mass Works projects, Mass Works 1 and Mass Works 2, allowed us to, I think, make the city safer for pedestrians, make the city safer for drivers. We've certainly beautified that area from an aesthetics point of view. It's a much more beautiful place. We've put in new crosswalks, new sidewalks, new lighting, planted new trees, and I think just gave it a better overall appearance. That came at a significant cost. The large majority of the money was from the state work for Mass Works, the state grants, but there was significant investment by us in that effort. Additionally, the, our efforts in flood mitigation, without question, have paid some dividends in being able to handle water better here in the city of Peabody. I don't want to say that all is solved, because it isn't, but we definitely can handle storms and water much better now through our upstream retention pond, the scouting way project, and just other basic maintenance and other efforts we've made as a city. That was something we did collectively and something that was unanimous in our efforts. And again, it's paying dividends. And how it's paid dividends, it's gotten people like Pat Tedesco and others who are interested in the city and want to invest in our city. Buildings that were vacant for a number of years now have restaurants and shops and are having a great deal of work take place. And it's just great to see. And I feel like we've taken some real positive steps. But there's still some additional work that needs to be done for us to be successful. And all of us have talked about the idea to have a destination, a place where, that would attract people to come, so to go to the restaurants, to go to the shops. And I'm here to say today, all of us are here to say that we think the children's museum can work here in the city of Peabody and could be part, could be a permanent part of our downtown efforts. And the reason for that is because we felt as a group that we needed to do a trial run. And to take a quote from Peter McGinn, we needed to test our concept and prove our concept that it could work here. And I think it's gone extremely well. We had some tremendous corporate partners who allowed us to move forward with the Curious City pop-up children's museum. We've become pop-up Peabody in a lot of ways. And I felt that we needed to test this concept to show that it could work here, so then we could go to the public, go to you as city councilors, and eventually ask for some votes and to move forward with this as a permanent, a permanent location. I wanted now to turn it over to our team, the Curious, or Peabody Cultural Collaborative, to talk specifics. And I think we have a video about the, the success that we have had with our temporary pop-up children's museum. The chair, the director is Melissa Robinson, and we have a terrific team. I think everybody knows the Peabody Cultural Collaborative. They work hard to promote the arts and culture in our city. It's made up of a number of city individuals that all of you know in some capacity, nonprofits, businesses, corporations, and they do tremendous work. And they've been really spearheading the children's museum effort and have really been the driving force behind it. We've had a number of meetings. We as a team have worked very hard to, to put this together. And I wanted to recognize and thank them for their hard work. And I wanted to ask Melissa, Martha, Camille, Deanne, whoever, we ready to do a little presentation on the children's museum? And then at the end, I'd just like to come forward and maybe talk about the next steps for us as a city.
Thank you. If you could, just state your name and address for the record.
Sure.
Employments.
My name is Melissa Robinson. I'm the project manager for Curious City. So we wanted to start tonight with a video that shows you some clips of some of the families that were able to enjoy Curious City during the first few months we were open. And special thanks to PBD TV for putting this together for us. Sorry. So children's museums do really great things economically, but also in terms of learning for families and for kids. Kids really learn through play. That's how they learn. That's how their brain is wired. They'll learn through play, too. But more and more research is showing that that's how kids need to learn.
A number of city officials and interested parties, we went on a trip and visited Dover, New Hampshire, and they had a wonderful children's museum. And it was kind of located in an area kind of like our downtown. And I thought it was a tremendous fit, and it's really helped revitalize and spark some more interest in that area. I think this could be tremendous for the city of Peabody. I'm very excited to take this next step.
You know, what a great idea, because here on the North Shore, we don't have a children's museum. You know, you either have to go into Boston, or you have to go to Dover, New Hampshire. And we just thought that there was really, that was a need that maybe Peabody could fill.
I've always been enamored with the idea of having a children's museum, trying to have something for our youth, our kids to enjoy, and a place where people, parents, families can come down and have a bite to eat and enjoy our downtown.
Downtown Peabody has a lot of great things going for it, but what downtown Peabody is really lacking is a destination business. And a destination business is one that can attract people from not only within the community, but outside of the community. And once you have a destination business, that tends to attract other businesses as well.
By bringing a children's museum to Peabody, we're going to have a place that's dedicated to teaching kids how to learn by playing. And it's such an exciting concept to be able to offer kids where they can go and they can explore things that maybe they don't have time to explore at school, or they don't have the things to explore at home. Really, a whole new world can open up to them through play experiences that we're going to be able to offer.
Our favorite part was yoga! Namaste!
So much fun!
Yeah, so much fun!
We'll be back!
We'll be back!
Thank you. I haven't asked you yet. So much fun. This place is so cool.
Yay! Give thumbs up for me.
Good job, Peabody!
Woo-hoo!
What fun it feels, and I was at the museum, but now it's time to leave, and I'm a little disappointed.
I'm telling you right now, Peabody is going to have a permanent children's museum in our downtown area.
So thank you for allowing us to come and speak tonight and share you the results of this pop-up. First, there are a lot of people who did a lot of work to make this happen. The members of the Peabody Cultural Collaborative, all of their organizations, none of us could have done this alone, so they all deserve great credit and the thanks of everyone who was involved and all the families who were able to enjoy the work. Also, our funders. We were able to get funding, our first funding came from the Essex County Community Foundation and the Essex County Creates Initiative. And they were the first to believe in this project and see that it had potential. And in addition to the funding, they also offered us technical assistance, and we're very supportive of the initiative in the past and are excited to see what we're able to do in the future. We also, having that funding, allowed us to approach a couple of local banks. So we'd like to thank North Shore Bank and Eastern Bank for their support. And our largest single funder was the J.B. Thomas Leahy Foundation, that really believed in the health and wellness benefits of play and learning and the exhibits that we were able to have. So I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them tonight, too. So back when I was a kid, my father's favorite movie was Field of Dreams. And there was a iconic line from it, which was, "If you build it, they will come." And it was true in Iowa in their baseball field, and it turns out, it's true in Peabody for a children's museum. You were able to see in some of the video clips, the numbers that we were all pretty blown away by when we saw how popular this became. Our first challenge was to find a space for Curious City, and we did a lot of looking and a lot of exploring. And Deanne was just saying that this time last year, we had no idea where we were going. We had money, but no idea where to put this thing. And we originally wanted to put it on Main Street, but the happy news was that there were no vacancies on Main Street for us to go in. So the George Peabody House and the Leather Workers Museum very graciously allowed us to use their space originally for three months, and then they offered to allow us to extend it. And we're still in the Leather Workers Museum, so we want to make sure we thank them for being very gracious hosts, and we have tried to be good guests to them. So in the 2,500 square feet that we had, we were able to put together nine hands-on exhibits that covered geography and finance, math, science, engineering, technology, literacy, health, healthy eating, things of that nature. And they were all hands-on and play-based. And from the very first day, the response was just overwhelming. We sell tickets, timed tickets, to control the flow of people, to make sure that the space is not overwhelmed. And many days during the March to June, we were sold out, and people were just not able to get tickets. As the video mentioned, we sold 7,000 tickets during the pop-up phase. We had 25 school visits that brought in approximately 1,000 school or groups. And they were not just from Peabody. We had schools come and groups come from Beverly, from Newburyport, from Lynn, from all over the North Shore and the Northeast. Northeast Ark, which has been a great partner for us, runs early intervention play groups in the museum, and they have their first session quickly filled up, and they asked us if they could run two. So since starting, they've brought 1,000 children into Curious City to do their early intervention program. So we're talking about thousands of families and kids that we've been able to serve through this project, which was really gratifying for us. And the 122 communities in 22 states and actually two countries, we had visitors from Australia. We'd like to think they came for Curious City, but they were probably here. But they enjoyed themselves very much. Again, just underscores that this is not something that is just appealing to Peabody. Downtowns need to be able to attract residents from other cities to support their businesses, and this project did. You know, our top 10 cities, Peabody was number one, but Salem, Beverly, Lynn, Danvers, Swampscott, Redding, Marblehead, Wakefield, and North Redding, all sent, each of them sent over 120 family members, came and enjoyed the museum during that time. So what we're really here tonight to tell you is that we're excited about this project. We're excited about what has happened, and we think that we've been able to demonstrate, which was really our goal going into this, was to collect the data to show that this is a project that can succeed, that can bring value to Peabody, and that can certainly bring value to families and children in the Northeast. So I'm happy to take any questions the councilors have, and so are the other members of the PCC.
Council Gravel had one question. Do you want to defer? Okay, mayor?
Thank you, Melissa. And again, thank you to, really a great team. And I did want to mention, and I was glad she did, I wanted to thank Dick St. Pierre, our historical community, our historical commission, for allowing us the opportunity to use the George Peabody Museum and Leather Workers Museum for this temporary pop-up pub. It was, it really worked out extremely well for us to have that location and really give us a sense if it could work in Peabody and specifically in our downtown area. And we certainly think it can. And I think it's time to make this dream a reality and move forward with the pop-up pub. I got pop-up pub. The pop-up, make the pop-up a reality and a permanent, get rid of the pop-up and make it permanent, and have a children's museum here in the city of Peabody. Again, I'm not asking for votes today. I'm not asking for any sort of approvals at this point. That's premature. We still have a lot of work to do on our business model. We still have a lot of work to do on the financial breakdown to make this a reality. But what we did want to report today is we looked at, as a team, we looked at a number of locations in the city. We toured a number of places to try to find the right location. And ultimately, it came down unanimously that we felt that 2 Washington Street was the perfect location for this next step, for this permanent children's museum here in our city. Again, we felt that because of the historic importance of the property, a property that we fought to control and keep here in the city, we always felt that we needed to control our own destiny as a community. And the purchase of 2 Washington, the purchase of 12 Washington, were our efforts to control our own destiny and make sure we decide what happens in that important part of our city and that important intersection in our downtown. It's really a gateway location for the city, great gateway site as you come in from Salem, Marblehead. That's a prominent building that everybody sees, and it is a beautiful location, a beautiful spot, and I think something special can happen there. And we think the children's museum could be that, could be that use that really helps our downtown take the next step. I can envision people going, walking over to Sugarcane, walking over to Galone Nero, to La Siesta, to Maki Sushi, to Brothers, to Next Mex, a whole bunch of locations. And I think this will have a, really a great effect on all of our businesses downtown. And certainly, we saw it just with the time when we did the temporary one. D'Orsi's saw a tremendous spike in business, as well as fonts across the street saw a tremendous spike in business. And we think that that could have a, a great effect on all of our businesses in the downtown. So we wanted to present that to you today. Again, we'll be coming back, we hope, in the very near term, in the next couple of months, to give you a better breakdown of the finances, how this is, how this is going to work. We believe we are positioned, we're in prime position to be able to obtain a number of grants, a number of opportunities for funding from nonprofits. We think there's going to be corporate opportunities as well for the children's museum, and we're working on that now. We've already started the application process for a number of grants. And we're hoping over, again, in the next couple of months, we'll come back and lay it out better for you as to where, how this is going to work from a financial point of view, and also in terms of the construction costs and all of that. We're not ready for that just yet, but we're going to be getting pretty close over the next couple of months. And again, I think that'll be a perfect opportunity to come back and speak to that. But certainly, if there's questions now, Mr. President, council, happy to answer that. Some questions now. I know all of our members of our team could do so as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Gravel.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you, Melissa. That was awesome. That presentation was perfect. It was perfect for me for two reasons. One, I'm a big mush for videos. But two, I finally, in my waning days as a councilor, got to hear the sound work and the video work in this great hall. So thank you very much for bringing that gift to me. And when the mayor talks, you know, about the bus trip, I didn't make the bus trip that day, but when, when people came back, and Mark Whiting in particular, who's on the PEF with me and Deanne and a bunch of others, Tom Gould, they couldn't stop talking about the children's museum. And I remember when Deanne brought in this brochure, and she said, "You know, we could do a pop-up museum." I'd be like, what, this, she's got a pop-up addiction or something. But it, it just sounded like such a cool idea and a great way to try it out. And I was such a thrill to hear your numbers in terms of your, your success. I think, you know, it's, it's a long journey, I know. Having read about this and seeing on the agenda, I actually started to look at some things online. If you're successful, you will be the 11th children's museum in the state of Massachusetts. And many are in communities just like us. There's one in Easton, there's one in Holyoke, there's one in Springfield, a myriad of places that have downtowns that needed something to call people forward. And I think, I've believed right from the beginning, as a matter of fact, I voted to buy St. Paul's Church, because when we were told that was going to be the home of the museum, I was thrilled that we were actually going to get a property and then fill it with a museum. So I, I'm absolutely thrilled. I think it'll be exactly what the downtown needs, and I can't thank you enough for the work that you're going to do. Also, in looking at those other sites, I did try to like go in and, you know, how'd they do it? You know, I'm one of these people that you start me on a string of things, and I get curious. And I, and a lot of them started out as 501(c)(3)'s for the granting capability, and then they basically, over time, capitalized not only on grants, but corporate sponsorships to raise the funds that they needed. Some took two years, some took four years, but they all basically had a similar dream in mind that this would be a reality. And I think it's a great dream to bring to Peabody. So thank you very much for all the effort.
Thank you. Council Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I had just a logistical question. Is the, is the organization going to, is this a city organization, or is this a quasi-government organization that's going to be renting a city property? How is, what are the logistics of that?
Good question. Right now, the organization that's been overseeing this, the Curious City Children's Museum, has been the Peabody Cultural Collaborative. They are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation. They've been taking care of the, the tickets and the oversight. It's really right here. These are, this is the group of people that have been doing it with assistance from ECCF and others. And with the city of Peabody being the owner of 2 Washington Street, there's obviously going to be a partnership, a partnership between us. And there's still some logistics we have to work out in terms of how that's going to go. There's some grants that we would be eligible for because they are nonprofits. As Council Gravel just said, there's other grants that we're eligible for because we're a city. So we got to figure out the best way to do that, and, and then we would be bringing that forward to you. So still, as I said, still much to iron out, but I see, but that's how it's worked to date.
Okay. Just to summarize, so to summarize that the, the city could, and I know this is up in the, you're trying to find the most advantageous way to do all of this. I get that. I just want to make sure I understand that the, the grant, the city would be, could have opportunity for grant money for construction, while the organization can have grant money for organ, for their own organizational operations.
Exactly. Because we own the property, we're going to be eligible, we think we're going to be eligible and in prime position to get some grant money, do the actual construction work as a, as a city. Then Peabody Cultural Collaborative, if that's the, the entity that moves forward with, right now, we're, we're looking in that direction, they would be eligible for some, we think, grant opportunities for the children's museum itself. So I think it's going to be a partnership, a combination of a number of things.
I think my, just my comment is, you know, I went, Melissa, I toured it. It's down, it was down the street from my house. It was never a problem with traffic or anything like that. It was always a, it was a really wonderful place. I will, I do, when it comes time, I do have some financial questions about how that's all going to be set up and organized. And I think, you know, I think right now, I, I think you're just giving us a concept, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Manning Mountain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't have any questions at this time, because we really haven't been given essential financial information along with other things, but I just have a few comments. The, I, I have to admit, I am a convert with the, the children's museum coming to Peabody. When it was first raised, it was attached only as an idea to a large purchase. It was kind of a, the proposal to buy the church on Washington Street for $650,000. The purpose was for an idea for the children's museum. I wasn't in favor of that, and I needed to be sold more on certainly the program that was presented to us to prompt such a purchase. Since that time, you've clearly now provided the data and the interest and the numbers to show that there is interest and it would be sustainable, and you've been very successful. And everybody that I know that went to that were really raving about the program. So congratulations on that. And now you've put forward what is essential in order to move forward and make further commitments to such a program. We have some hard data to back up that, that it will work. So I do support the children's museum coming to Peabody. I hope that we find a home for the, the children's museum to, to come to Peabody. It's going to be a very hard sell for me to, to utilize 2 Washington Street for the children's museum. And all these buildings that we do have, that, that the city owns that aren't on the tax rolls is an issue for me. So we need to get these buildings on the tax rolls, and I'm not sure that what's been presented tonight, and again, we're going to work on these things, I get it, it's still in its planning stages, that's not going to put that building or even the church back on the tax rolls, presented as it is this evening. The, all the other locations that really haven't been mentioned, it said a group of people went and looked at all these other locations, and they were ruled out. Well, I'd like to know, you know, what locations they were. I'd like to know why they were ruled out, and I, and I'd like further discussion on all of those places to, to say why it's not better at that place. And why wouldn't, I want a win-win for the city of Peabody. I want the children's museum to come to the city of Peabody, but I want to do it with, in the best interest of the entire city. And lastly, I was interested that Mark Whiting, it was his brainchild, it was his idea, which is fascinating to me, because I was thinking, why not the mall? Why wouldn't we place the children's museum at the mall? So it's really interesting to me that it was his idea, Mark Whiting's initiative, to, to explore bringing a children's museum to Peabody, because we often talk about having, trying to help the mall stay in, stay in business. It's struggling, given everything, sales online, and, you know, we're trying, we did the residential overlay to try and bring in other opportunities for the mall, so that the mall can continue to succeed as our biggest tax contributor. So that's just an idea. Certainly, having, in your short time that you were open, you only, you had, not only, excuse me, you were only open three to six months, and you had 7,000 visitors come, that's certainly a lot of potential to bring to the mall, to help boost the mall as well. So those are just my comments. I really don't have any questions, because I know you're going to come forward to us again with more information, financial data, another, more solid business plan. So those are all the things that I'll be looking for when you do come back. Again, I thank you for all your work, and people really, really did enjoy the children's museum, and I look forward to working with you to bring that program to Peabody in a manner that's in the best interests of the entire city. So I thank you for all your hard work.
Do that, if I could address a couple of those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think that the North Shore Mall is the exact opposite spot that we would want the Children's Museum to be. To me, the whole idea was to bring something to our downtown as a destination, to help all the businesses that are in our downtown area. That was the idea of it, and that's what, we looked at different options, and the Children's Museum, to me, was the perfect one. Again, being right around the corner from the library to Washington Street, we think would be a perfect synthesis between the two, working for educational purposes. We think there'd be a great dynamic between the Children's Museum at Two Washington and our main library branch on Main Street, and really would benefit that whole corridor, that whole area. And that's why it was really a focus on the downtown. We're not going to be able to get into specifics of other sites that we looked at because they are owned by other people right now that I don't think they'd feel very comfortable with us openly talking about the different locations, other than, I can tell you as a group, that we looked at several, probably more than several, locations to determine what the best spot would be, and they were all in the downtown area. There was nothing else that we looked out far outside that area because really, our focus was on downtown. And we believe that by investing in Two Washington Street, having function space above, doing, working with some corporate partners, we can bring a lot of people downtown that will spend money and, again, increase the value of our properties downtown, increase the value of our businesses, that will ultimately bring in more tax revenue. Both Two and 12 Washington were never on our tax rolls. 12 Washington was a church, they were not on the tax rolls. Two Washington Street had been vacant for years and was being operated by a social organization. They were not profit or they were not tax revenue producers. We're trying to bring them to be tax revenue producers, that's why we've taken this action. And we wanted to protect, I believe, and create our own destiny at that location and at that intersection by buying these properties, because ultimately, what was going to happen is they were all going to be torn down, and we would have had large development, residential development projects that I did not feel, and I know I was not alone on this, felt would be in line with what we were trying to do in our downtown. To me, the effort and the investment needs to be in our downtown to help a variety of people, make us, have us all have a sense of pride in our downtown and make those properties something valuable for us. And I think we can do something special at those locations, and I think this is the spot to do it. As far as I'm concerned, it's full speed ahead on Two Washington. We'll be bringing that proposal to you for the better financial breakdown in our business model and some of the construction plans. We did get a, some seed money from the Community Development Authority. They've given us some seed money to start doing, to hire a owners' project manager and an architect to start getting the real costs for us so that we can better provide that to you when and if the time comes for votes to move forward with this proposal. So, again, very excited. I couldn't be more excited. This has been a dream of mine and so many others to make this a reality. I think it's going to be wonderful for our families, wonderful for our children, and again, just give a great sense of pride to our city and to our downtown. For years, we struggled to create an identity in our downtown. I think we are in the process of doing that now, and this Children's Museum will really put us on the map and really, again, bring great pride to our city, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Counsel Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had hoped to get more information after you came back and presented to us with, you know, your plan, but clearly, from the mayor's remarks, especially when he says he wants to move forwards, full steam ahead, that our input isn't needed, isn't welcomed, isn't warranted, isn't necessary, and that's insulting. So, given the fact that the decision apparently has already been made without any financial information, without any plan, without any commitments, with hopes of grants, and lots of other hopes and dreams, that concerns me as a counselor who has to make fiduciary decisions for the city, and that's what I get elected to do. I get elected to look out for the interests of the entire city, and I get elected to think and review plans and listen to people, take their questions, answer their questions, and do what is in the best interest of the constituents, and that's my, that's my job. And that's all I ever try to do up here. And it's just unfortunate that it's being presented to us this way. And given that it has been presented to us this way, I need to remind everyone that we just had an election, just had a campaign, and the two issues that were most important to all the constituents, to all the newspapers, and that the counselors had to answer to were traffic and affordable housing. Those are the two most important issues. And this project, if we're just going to ram it down everyone's throat downtown, was a traffic study. We're going to bring 7,000 people, just in three to six months, you bring in 7,000 people, that's great. But you're going to bring in 7,000 more cars downtown. There's no parking. The traffic is unbelievable downtown. It's the number one complaint from everyone everywhere you go, is traffic. So, we're just going to say, "To hell with the studies, to hell with the plans, full steam ahead." Nope. That's not what my constituents, that's not what they want to hear. Affordable housing. It was affordable housing and traffic. Those are the issues. Yet, what are we doing here? We're not, we're saying absolutely no, we don't want housing downtown, but we want more traffic. It's complete opposite, it's the antithesis of what we've been saying for the last six months, of the issues that we want to address. Those are the issues that people want solutions for. So, I had hoped to work, you know, sincerely, come to the council and say, "This is what you want to present and you sincerely want to work with us," when we're told you don't want to work with us. You want to tell us what needs to be done. It's not good government, it's not democracy, and that's not what the citizens of Peabody want to hear. That's not how they want to be treated. They don't want to be treated that way. It's their tax dollars, it's their home, it's their quality of life. They need to be heard, and I listen to them. So, I'm going to continue to listen to them, and I hope that you will all work with me as I try to work with you to bring the Children's Museum to Peabody in a place that works for everybody, not just a small group that thinks that they know where it needs to be, and they're going to make it happen that way because that's what they want. That's not how things work. So, thank you for listening to me, and again, I thank you for all your hard work. I think that the Children's Museum is going to be a good thing, and it's just unfortunate that it's presented, been presented this way with this tone. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Because it is mind-boggling to me how the presentation of a Children's Museum could be turned into something negative, which is, obviously, has been done, and the decision was made to turn it into a negative. I don't know where it came from that we were shoving something down someone's throat. This has been worked on for the last four years. Everybody has known what we've been working on, and I can tell you, I think Counsel Manning-Martin, I don't think you went to the Children's Museum, but I know almost every other counselor did, and I was there a number of times and others were, and we got a real feel for what the people wanted and what the feel for the families wanted and what our children wanted. And I took that. And to turn it into a discussion on affordable housing and election results, and, you know, this is what we do, we bring forth ideas. I haven't asked for a vote, I haven't even presented any financial breakdown yet, and you're already criticizing it and challenging it when that hasn't even been presented to you, and already, you've turned it into a negative. This was supposed to be a rally to talk about the excitement that our community has and that we've seen. This isn't some concept we brought out of thin air. This has been proven to work, and the hard work by so many people that are sitting here and to insult them in that way is mind-boggling to me, that you would criticize their decision or their vote on to where we should move forward with the location. And we're exploring that location. There hasn't been any vote taken, so we cannot move forward with the Children's Museum until there's votes taken by this body. And we came here out of respect because we've all been working so hard on this, and I know a number of counselors have gone and been a part of this and have been a part of meetings that we've had on this. It's just amazing to me that it would be turned in that way. This is something exciting that's going to transform a section of our city in such a positive and profound way and be such a difference-maker for so many businesses and shops that are really trying to get a foothold on the downtown. And nobody is more of an advocate for affordable housing than I have been, trying to bring forward different projects. But to get into an affordable housing discussion while we're talking about the Children's Museum, it's pretty amazing to me. And again, I apologize to the board members that have worked so hard on this, the people that have volunteered their time, so many people have volunteered their time. This is an exciting project, we have a lot of work to do, this is the very early stages. Again, we haven't even got to the point where we're bringing you plans and a financial breakdown in our business plan. We haven't even got to that point yet. This was just a, to show you how successful the temporary Curious City Children's Pop-Up Museum was, and that we're excited as a group to bring this forward for the next step. We've identified Two Washington Street, we think it'd be a great location. I want to move forward with everything we have to make this a reality because I think our city, our downtown, and our families and children need it and deserve it, and I can't wait to get started and looking forward to the next step in bringing that forward for discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Counsel, if you don't mind, can we hold off our additional comment back and forth?
Mr., point of personal privilege, the mayor wants to get the last word.
Counsel Manning-Martin.
Thank you. Mayor, you said you want to move full steam ahead using Two Washington Street. There needs to be more discussion on that. It was purchased with the taxpayers' dollars, and there needs to be more discussion with that, and you can backpedal all you want, that that's not what you said, that is what you said.
We'll say it again, full speed ahead on making the Children's Museum a reality. Two Washington Street, we decided as a group and voted that that is the location we want to move forward on. Ultimately, it has to come to you. If you decide that Two Washington Street is not the location you want, then you can vote no on it at that time.
And, Mr. Chairman, I did have the floor, but I'll let the mayor have the last word. Thank you.
Counsel, again.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and the team, for your presentation. I was part of that group that went up to Dover, and that was in the spring of 2014. I think Counsel Rosignol, then, school committee member, Rosignol, I think, was part of that group as well. And we saw something that we really thought could work in Peabody. So, Counsel Gravell mentioned he wasn't able to make it that day, but there was a number of people that came back kind of excited and kind of effusive in their comments about how this might be able to work in the downtown. I was clearly one of those people. But it was, again, just a concept, and the Curious City Pop-Up, to me, at the George Peabody House, was a really important proof-of-concept effort. That's been said tonight. I think it's been commented on several times about how the statistics that were gathered in that effort make that case. So, you know, I went by, beyond the statistics, I went by the museum several times while it was in kind of full operation at different times, and I was really struck by the activity going on there and the vibrancy, and just to see, I've lived in the downtown my whole life, and just to see a lot more strollers going around and a younger cross-section of people, it's really an energy level that we need to have in the downtown that's missing, quite frankly. And it really put a smile on my face to see that, and not just once, not just twice. I went by there a number of times and I saw it repeatedly. I really believe this can work. So, I guess with that, you know, it's clear, and I think the mayor was quite clear on it, that there's a fair amount of work that remains to be done to take this next step, but I am fully supportive of working with this team to advance permanent, to a permanent Children's Museum in the downtown, and I really do think that it will generate business benefits to the area that go well beyond the museum itself. So, again, thank you to the mayor, thank you to the team for your presentation, and look forward to continuing to work with you on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the team. I too was on that bus trip to Dover. It was a great day to be up there. We've come a long way since PDAT, have we not, De? I'm almost embarrassed that we called ourselves PDAT. My family, my wife and daughter and her family, were frequent flyers at the Pop-Up Children's Museum, Camille, and thank you for the video up there of little Quinn running around and having a ball. But I couldn't be more enthused about the prospect of bringing a Children's Museum downtown, wherever it might be. So, I want to thank you and keep up the good work, stay focused. Thank you.
Counsel Rosignol.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was on that bus trip as well up to Dover, and what struck me when we were there in 2014 was the size and the scope of the Children's Museum. Their space was five times what Curious City is, and the thing that amazed me about that presentation, to be perfectly honest with you, is the amount of activities and vibrancy that you had in such a small area. And to have 7,000 people come through that small area is outstanding. So, it shows that we are on the right path. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think having the Children's Museum downtown is vital. I think it's vital for downtown, it's vital for foot traffic, and I, to, I think it will actually alleviate some traffic concerns down there because I think it'll promote more foot traffic, which is the whole purpose of having a destination downtown, is to have a place that people can go to, but then walking to food and to shops and to do different things. So, they're not just driving straight through Peabody and heading to Salem to go shopping and to have dinner. So, now you literally have something that will be a cornerstone that we can build off of to really improve and maintain the vibrant nature that we're really trying to strive for downtown. The only question I have when this presentation does come back to us is parking for this because if we were able to generate 7,000 people in that small of a space, my hope, my goal would be we triple that because we're going to triple the amount of space that we'll be utilizing in whatever location we use downtown. So, as long as the parking is part of the presentation that comes back before us, I think this would be a home run to really solidify a strong cornerstone for our downtown. So, thank you.
Counsel Sessler.
Thank you. I was also part of that field trip, and it was a, it was a good visit, I must agree, and to see it in action. Couple of things I would just ask when you come back before us, we kind of have, we talk a lot about that Dover Children's Museum. I would be curious if you could maybe talk a little bit about their budget, what it is, what their annual visitors are, just curious to know, and then what their square footage is versus what we're proposing. See, if we have something to kind of compare it to, I think it'd be, we'd be foolish not to look at some of those comparisons. In addition, I think when it comes to museums and education and things of that nature, hopefully, we can, there are some grants out there, there are foundations out there that really specifically geared towards these type of situations. I'm sure some are one-time grants, some might be perpetual, some might be, you know, founding grants when you're, you know, building or redeveloping a project like this, so I'm sure you'll look into that, but I just want to bring that up. And obviously, taking a building like the Batten Court Building and making it ADA compliant, you know, there's, that's a big, that's a big, that's a big project. So, that's why I just throw out the grants and things of that nature if that's the, where we're going to be going. I just had one curious question. I wasn't sure, what was the age group, what was it geared for, Curious City, and is it the same age group going forward? I just, is it first through third grade, three through 11 years old? I just didn't know if I ever picked up on that. Why not?
So, we were targeting ages 2 to 10. We had a lot more success with the younger population of 2 to 6-year-olds than we did with the older elementary school. Now, since we are still operating, to kind of close that gap, we're working on some after-school programming and some more structured things for the older kids who are not quite as engaged in some of the exhibits. Also, the permanent space, wherever it is, we would like to incorporate some partners who can appeal to older ages, maybe even past 10, depending on what the structure is, again, the classes, and incorporate more technology in a permanent space that will hopefully engage older kids as well.
Sure. And I think, you know, when I look at a captive audience, the 2 to 6 is great, but, you know, who doesn't like a field trip in elementary school? So, that's a perpetual revenue stream that I think, you know... So that's a perpetual revenue stream that I think, you know, there are certain things that, you know, elementary schools get into when they do it. And how many, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of communities that are north of Boston that don't want to go into Boston and the children's museum, God bless them, but to come up to Peabody. And once we show what we have, they'll be here on a year and year basis and be perpetual. And just to piggyback on what Counsel Rosignol said, I also think that you do need to look a little bit at, hopefully, the potential for some bus parking because I really think that's, you know, the possibility and a reality, and it's a good reality for the reasons why I just stated. But thank you and thank you for all your work. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
If I could, Mr. President, very briefly, thank you, Counsel Sassla. I think those are excellent suggestions. I think that's information we can get to you. Considering we did a lot of work looking at other children's museum and the success that they had. And as to the parking, absolutely, that's going to be an important part of this, Mr. Rosignol. The, certainly, we've always felt to unlock the true potential of Two Washington Street. We needed to have Twelve Washington Street a part of that, the St. Paul's property. There's about almost 60 spaces over in that location, and we're going to be looking at some other options as well. So that'll be a part of our presentation when we come to you. And we'll cover a whole variety of things that are important to make this project successful.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counsel Matzulis.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I was excited about this meeting this evening. And one of the reasons for that, I've been looking at Peabody and looking at the downtown. Have you counselors noticed the increase in the foot traffic downtown? I've noticed, I can't believe how quick it's come. And I know, I'm in Peabody every day. I'm downtown every day. And every day I notice more and more people, you know? And I just had a comment also because I was one of the people who went up to Dover, New Hampshire. And a few counselors, remember, I told you, my mother was born in Dover, and that's why I wanted to go on the trip. And I'm very familiar with Dover, the area itself. It's an old mill town. And the museum is in the old Stratton Shoe Factory. They converted the shoe factory and built the museum there, which reminds you a lot of Peabody. That's how Peabody is set up. And I know that eventually we're going to get to the issues of traffic and the cost. And, you know, I mean, we can't go through something as major as this without eventually getting to talk to it. That's all part of the process. It's going to be before us, and we're all going to have our questions lined up to ask whoever's ready to answer, whether it be the mayor or the panel behind us. But I'm looking tonight, when I read the paper and, you know, in our papers here, and I thought this evening was on the location. And that's what I had in mind, that tonight we're going to sit here and talk about location. Do you like that site, Two Washington Street, or not? And be very honest with you, when, I liked what I saw in Dover, New Hampshire. And I said, I'd like to see that in Peabody. But when I saw the location it was going to, I, be very honest with you, I wasn't excited about where it was going. And when I read the paper this evening, I said, now that is a little more attractive than the site that we were looking at, traffic-wise, location-wise. I would rather see it there than anywhere else in downtown Peabody. And I also thought of where else could we put a place like that? You know, other than in one of the old mill buildings that are probably down a walnut street, you know? But I thought about that, and I said, that would not be a destination location, you know? And as far as the location itself goes, I kind of like it. You know, I kind of like it. I mean, it's not, we'll see what else is down the line. I don't know, but this is the best site I've seen before us up till now. And I'm going to save my questions, as a lot of you, I'm sure, have down the line a little bit about, you know, how we're going to build this, what work needs to be done, what the cost is going to be, traffic studies, everything else that goes along with it. So I just want to say congratulations to the hard work that was done on this, and let's see what happens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counsel Trast.
Thank you, Chairman. I really wasn't planning to say anything, but I wasn't on that bus trip. And I want to know why I wasn't invited. No, I was invited, I just couldn't go. I heard they had, yeah, they all had fun, and I'm sorry I missed it. But I do want the community to know, and I wish maybe the cameraman can flash over and see the faces that's sitting across with me right now, this panel, and how comfortable and extremely satisfying I am to see these people who you see constantly on so many different agendas and groups. I mean, you got, we have to be confident that these folks, and I know I am, they're going to do the right thing, ask the right questions, and bring their information back. Because when I see this panel, I see success, and I want to say thank you. In initial, I wasn't really sure a children's museum was going to do well here in Peabody. I didn't know. I hear the numbers. Children and parents that go to my wife's school reported back how much fun they had. It was a great time. There's nothing around like it. I'm telling you, I was, I was won over by what people had said to me. And again, by just seeing these faces here, if it's going to get done properly, these are the people who are going to do it. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be very brief. I just wanted to tell you about my day on Sunday. My oldest daughter, who was a senior at high school, had a college interview set up. And the interviewer said, can we meet somewhere in your city so that I can see your community? And without any, anything from me, my daughter said, can we meet for coffee at Breaking Grounds? And it was very nice to hear my daughter say, you know, that she wanted to go meet at a coffee shop in downtown Peabody. So at which point, she didn't want to drive there because she was afraid she wouldn't find a parking space. So we'll discuss that later. But I did, I did drive her down. And upon coming onto Main Street, I saw a high school friend of mine with his wife that had just moved into One Main Street from West Peabody. And I think that's what we wanted to see. We wanted to see, you know, I don't want to call myself older, but older people, middle-aged people, move into the downtown with some expendable income. And I think that's what One Main Street did. I think that my daughter even being aware that there is a Breaking Grounds in downtown, when four years ago, when I ran, we did a neighborhood cleanup, Mr. Mayor, and a lot of the Peabody High students were unaware of what was in the downtown. And I think that that's changed drastically over the last four years. And we continued, my wife, my daughter and I, after her interview, we went to Brother's Deli. And, you know, we both had a sandwich. And, you know, remarkably, the conversation was great as, from her vantage point of how beautiful the downtown is. So I just want to say thank you to, not just for this museum, but Counsel Trast kind of stole my thunder a bit. This is the same group that has done a lot for downtown Peabody. And, you know, to see Mr. Tedisco here and all of you that have poured your heart and soul and your money into this downtown, I can't say thank you enough. And I think that this is the last piece of the puzzle that we may need to really make downtown completely successful. So thank you to you all. Okay, with that, we'll move to item four. There are no, there are no public hearings. So move to item five, reports of committees. It was one committee meeting. It was a committee of the whole which moved into executive session. The discussion in executive session was in regards to the AAA litigation as well as litigation involving inclusionary zoning. Present at the meeting were all 11 counselors, the mayor, and Attorney Khan, as well as the city clerk and assistant city clerk. Number six, motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Matzulis.
I have no motions, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Melville.
No motions this evening, Mr. President.
Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to accept item 8D and set up a public hearing. Please. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
No further motions. Thank you.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you like me to take 8C on your behalf?
I would, Counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8C and set up a public hearing. So moved.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9A and set up a public hearing. So moved.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, item 10A, move to adopt as advertised and ordinance amending section 2-197 entitled "Charges for the Annual Listings of the Code of the City of Peabody." So moved.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to adopt as advertised item 10B and ordinance amending section 6-16, annual license fees of Article II dogs of the Code of the City of Peabody. So moved.
On the motion, Counsel Trast.
Yes, I have no problems with the language here. The only thing I'm asking is if we can look into the fines. As I said at last meeting, I want to make sure the fines at least equal what the fees are. So if we can, at some point in time, have that information come back and we can maybe amend the adoption if it needed to be regarding the fines for not having fee licenses. To the chair.
Okay, on the motion on the floor, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote. And Counsel Trast will take yours as a second motion to have the clerk provide that information to the council. And on that motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8B and refer to legal affairs. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it is a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counsel Rosignol.
No motions tonight, Counsel President.
Counsel Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No motions, just two thank-you notes or letters from some businesses and individuals that we donated money from our drug education and awareness. One was from Citizens Inn, Corey Jackson, the executive director, thanking us for our gift of $1,000. And he reminds us that this helps his clients at the Inn Transition. The Inn Transition houses eight families in early recovery from substance use disorder. They get comprehensive support from financial literacy and life skills to daycare and mental health counseling while, all while living in the shelter. So he sent us a thank you for that, and I'd like to... ...this scholarship that we started last year. And that was Ryan Nagy, and he sent it from Florida. He's out going to school in Florida. He's obviously a smart guy, going to Florida. It's nice and warm there. "I went to New Hampshire on a cold hill, and it was very windy. And if I had to do it all again, I'd head south." So thank you, and I'll enter that into record as well. And that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Counsel Sassla.
No motions, orders, and resolutions.
Counsel Trast.
Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to make a motion to accept 8E. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
That's all. Thank you.
And Counsel Gould.
No motions, Mr. President.
Counsel Gravell, we left everything for you.
Thank you, Counsel President. Get my last practice in, eh? Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to move to receive items 7A, B, and C and send them to the finance committee for review. I believe we're going to meet on the 12th? The 12th? Yeah. So we'll send them to the finance committee, and so moved.
Thank you, Counsel. And there's, on the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Just one more, item 8A.
Move to receive item 8A.
On the motion, all in favor...
And if I can refer that to the finance committee as well, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Counsel. On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Any further motions, Counselor?
No, I would just like to, I don't know if anybody, everybody's aware, but the PBD Ed Foundation is running a raffle. It's one in 250 chances. Each chance is $100. And the lucky winner will get two luxury suite Patriots tickets. So you'll be in the blue level suite inside, which is nice, against the Chiefs on December 8th. You'll also get a collector's bottle of bourbon from the Buffalo Trace people. It's the, it's a bottle that was drawn from the 6 millionth barrel. We had to enter a competition to get that. It comes in a collector's package, so it's really cool. And a special tailgate package that when you see it, it'll just blow you away. So one in 250 chances. The way to get the tickets is just go online to pbdedefoundation.org/raffle, and you can enter the win. And it would be a great thing to, all of the proceeds from that, if we sell our 250 tickets, will be used to help us fund our PEF grants for our teachers within the city. And all the money goes back to our children. So it'd be an awesome thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Did you have a motion, Counsel? Counsel Rosignol.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counsel Gravell, when are tickets available until and when is the drawing?
So tickets are available until the drawing, which is the evening of December 2nd. And so far, we're about half sold, which is great.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I just had one reminder before we adjourn. The Counsel Christmas party is December 11th from 6 to 9. The clerk will be sending out the invitation shortly. But, and I believe you did send out a save the date already, but Stonewood Tavern, so you're all aware of it. Thank you. And on the motion, all in favor and opposed, everybody have a great evening.